Haha. Well, so a good start. Okay. And we're here for what it does. So.
Well, we're going to talk about Todd. No, I sent him to you.
Oh, okay.
But you guys haven't discussed it. So.
We've got a fact.
Yeah. Article 37, which is a couple of little things. The planning commission needs to be changed to the board of zoning appeals. And then he's got the part KSA numbers for this. Those first one here. This one. And then this one down here. Those were part KSA numbers. So.
So are we adding the permission?
No, this is just saying that this is the minimum, this is the maximum, essentially. So Article 37 never had the labor information in it, it was just about amendments. So 37 won't have any commission and company members and all of the things that were in the board of zoning appeals. And I think that was our.
I don't think this is cleaning up all the business.
So the board of zoning appeals is Article 36. And it just has kind of that same language in there, which it was a copy and paste on those different sections. And then what Article 37 was originally, it started with. It started with amendments. It's right here. So this is just adding an information about the planning commission in the zoning regulations. There were five laws established two years ago.
Except that one member.
Right.
The commission shall be a member of the board.
So what the edit was, is there was planning commission in there. This is the edited version where it says zoning.
So that still leaves a member of the commission on both.
On both boards. And then.
They were attending.
It's.
No, there's one member of the planning commission on board of zoning appeals. And that's me. I'm on both.
You got that whole.
So those KSA numbers. Those KSA numbers were changed. So this is the new amendment from Todd that suggests. This is on Article 37. So you guys have any questions about that? And then the other thing that he didn't have the issue with, because this down here was RW for the wind, renewable wind. But Article 30 is changing to just the renewable energy with the amendments. So this had to be changed down here because it was a double C. So this should wrap up Article 37. Say that and move on to. He did not any changes to Article 30, which was just establishing the renewable energy. He did not need changes to that. It was just 37 and then the amendment. Well, I know where it is when it's on my desktop and when it's just on my laptop. It's on your desktop, it's in two screens. So there's powers. So. It's just talking about spacing. So once it's all wrapped up and the public meetings are done and all that, we'll go under and format it. So it's all nice and pretty for that final period. So it's where he's talking about spacing and it's a formatting thing. It's a section two. Four. Section two is a section here. It's here.
I think in the discussion that we had at the time about that was more so, I believe, for small more or runoff. I mean, if something, and maybe that was the way we read or looked at it, but it was, it all of a sudden becomes true and something washes out of the bowl. We didn't want to leave it there for five, give it five years to fix that. So I don't know if it's worded right, but I don't think it was meant to, that if the future planning commission changed the regulations, it was. Failure and as part of the process.
Well, I think. Ready to leave since possible. It gave five years to make change.
There are big changes. I think we want this whole world to settle down. It makes more changes.
We can stop that. We can do what we like now.
Well, I think specifically in there, it speaks of current standards for grading form and rating requirements. So the regulation can be modified and make current criminal subjects.
To me, the author of the board of zoning might be one of the areas. And this amortization. Amortization to me is a spreading out of a cost over five years. Not taking an action to correct efficiency.
It says for the amortization period will apply to the amended law. That regulation.
Amortization. Well, we're not going to control the amortization. No, we're not on grant. They want to stretch the cost over five years, that's fine. But they have to do it in Walton. So if they've got a contract, this one will make five years to pay.
But the clarification didn't fit for us to clarify who we were referring to specifically, to the order to correct the efficiency.
Well.
But yeah.
Apead is like that, isn't it? He simply went back to, went back to five years. And I don't think we agree.
Yeah, I just think at the time when we were thinking mainly of. Not that the, not that the, you know, ten years down the road, we're going to be zoning, planning commission is going to rewrite these. And they had one year to, to re, to fix that. I don't think it was based on, if something appeared, they didn't get on the plan, you know, they need to get it fixed within a year.
And they look on.
I think that as it says, it's grading form, you know, those kind of things. It's not so much the whole project that they're, they're having to fix in a special.
That's one of the things that this code, the law, I thought, is how we put up.
So what, what that is saying is, the county wants to give them five years to study the products. And we want to give them one, that's the work.
Let's say the one. I, that's, yeah, I think that if looking at it overall, one year is short. If they, if the regulations change, but that's specifically talking about grading form or more, yeah.
So you're saying section number four here. Section or in, which is.
No, that's what, that, the way I read.
Yeah, we're in section two.
It's popping up. Little cap. We're not even official here. We can't take any after.
I mean, you guys would discuss, maybe not change something.
Yeah, that's kind of saying, leave it and, you know, when this thing goes to the permission, and they send it back and say, no, we don't want that changed. And the view that I don't see a reason to change it at this time, so.
Well, and if they send it back, then I think we would want to leave the permission to find out why.
I mean, that's more of a discussion.
This right here, this was a me thing when I was in the altar room. Because she wanted to add that intermination date in, but there was a number spot that we added in.
Yeah.
So that was a me thing, and if you guys think that's right, then. This is our draft. So that's our draft.
Go to section three, twelve, noise. A lot of things were taken out. What we did three, but didn't change the alphabet.
That's formatting.
About that.
Well, the, that'd be formatting. And it'll change whenever we, because right now we have a lot of stuff that's.
Four days inside.
In this last graph, it might get cut down. But it's actually. Yeah, I got it.
That's, that's in this package?
It's the one we gave you last term. Okay, so this is the, this is the working graph. So it's not what you were talking about? That's been, that's been fixed.
That's what.
Six. C.
So what's it say vegetation and the plan?
Yes, that's what we're saying, add a plan back in. That's what we're saying. And then go add plan for vegetation management, which is right there.
Will that be both, both cases there? Put in the vegetation plan, put in the vegetation plan. So both of them will be managed.
Well, in C, it's vegetation management now. And we want to plan back in. And then on D, it will be vegetation management, added in.
Then right out of that, it says it's the vegetation. So will both of them.
That would be great.
That's what I was making from that.
Yeah.
You said if the time, as you were just talking about, you don't want to say. You said if the time, that's when that's on.
That was me. Vehicles. What was it? It was in there, I don't think it was. No, I think it's me. No. That's one thing that's my problem here. Because that's. I don't use any comments. So obviously.
And mountains are the ones that didn't log in. So we had a whole bunch of them. And we heard one of them was a professional, not good one. So we probably saw the order. And they changed.
Right, so that's all of this.
So. Except that.
Well, that's how I discussed it. My suggestions. Going through the really submissions, not about national pay. Then I think we should have a sign sheet. And somebody's going to have to track that, so we don't want to call the same people twice. So.
Are you talking about the solar feedbacks that have already been submitted?
Yeah. They're, they're nice enough, they give their ideas and thought.
So off the bat.
Yeah. Then have a sign sheet. Everybody else sign. Just take that, have the assignment.
We're talking about the next week, the government's meeting. So some of you would care about that, that the opinions were. It's really interesting, in a sense, when you talk. So do you really want to go out there?
Yeah, they're better.
Yeah. And so the people in the comments in there, between Johnson, and a lot of the comments that you got, that's a lot of.
But I think we tighten it up, right? My guess is that people who actually reviewed it and made comments, probably going to be reasonably satisfied. And swiftly, if they took the time to respond to us, we could consider it.
I'm just saying, it's just like history now. It's just not.
There's a lot of comments. They may say.
There's a lot of comments, there's some comments that do it.
But we have acknowledged all of them, we should have acknowledged all of the comments.
But although they're different. They represent our knowledge. Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is what you're saying, you're not asking this board to, at the beginning of the public session, to go over all of the previous.
No.
What you're saying, the list of people, if somebody else, then of course it will be allowed to comment.
They're providing, they're providing, so I think.
What kind of, what kind of defining.
I'll be going back in the first minute.
So what, meaning that.
So you gotta have a bicycle?
Yeah.
Does each, each person get three minutes and that's all they get? Because there's some of them, they may have an issue with the entire, you know, certain things. And that's the thing that I want to be very clear to the public on. These comments are to be the regulations specific, not whether or not they're for or against solar anything on these regulations. And so there are going to be some people who have multiple things that might not cover it in three minutes. Are they limited to one three-minute time period?
No, I, I think if they're past the three minutes, we come back with the heat. They've never had a chance in three minutes. They want to stay, manage the weather costs.
Or into the next section.
Or into the next section, sure. I would have a reflect, I think it's done, that's not too bad.
I think we need to put a beginning and end title on, on just, so that.
Stick to seven to nine, or do you want to extend that?
Six, yeah, start at six, or, I don't, I don't.
Our six is live.
Do you want me to encourage people to do another solar feedback for the public meeting with section and like what their specific topic is?
Yeah. You might say something with the effect that after having reviewed, they submit a document. If they had any further comments. If they had any further comments, please.
I think they'll be all, I think they'll be all, I think they'll be all too, speak directly, definitely.
Well, they, would they want to just bring them to that public meeting, or submit them in bringing to the public?
I'd say just.
Oh, no, no, let's get them to a, to a meeting. I don't want to waste time reading those. A lot of thousands of repetitions.
Well, then that's when, what they're speaking on, may be repetitions, where we want to read.
That's true.
So submitted a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't we pretend ladies are. Wouldn't be, or still we can do this.
I mean, I do think that there would be someone that. Something spoken about in the beginning, they stirred or simulated another conversation that they had, and they didn't write that down and send it to us. You know, so then every time it comes up, they may want to talk about something different.
Sure.
Five people gets in the same.
Well, I'm not there, I'm not the director.
Right, and that's why I don't know if, by turning it in, the base is really doing any, I mean, yes, or yes.
Well. If we acknowledge, we start, we have all reviewed submissions. Then say, if they have any, they need a decision.
Right, so you're going to call on all the, have submitted previous solar feedback ones. To see if they have any comments or suggestions.
Any different? If you put a book on, you put a book on. Well, I'd say all the slides. Right, right.
And then.
I'll take the back.
And then we'll go to the ones that have submitted, do. Feedback ones. The thing is.
Well, I need to take the feedback from the company. That's what I'm. We just keep that going.
Well, that's right. Then you're going to have people signing in, that will want to speak, that have not submitted solar feedbacks.
Well. Let's make the name, everybody coming in.
There'll be people to talk, speak after. If they want to. In three minutes.
And then, of course, for those that have been committed. First person to sign up will be the first person to speak, after they want to submit something.
And then.
So depending on preference, depending on the day of the study. I'm sorry, so you continue, open. Yeah, if they've got the time, try to help us out, and if you can, we should consider, we can correct this out. I think we need to give them that courtesy.
So after the three minutes, if they still have more to discuss, then they'll background that.
You can, this is a little word. That's a cool thing.
Well, yes, well.
They only got to get one three minute, not three minutes, and then you have the twenty three minutes, they're still going to get three minutes.
Uh, Douglas County's meeting, they, uh. Individuals' speakers, we have not, we need, and needs time to other speakers.
Well, we're going to tell them.
But they're going to get another three minutes.
Each individual, that which will find about.
But, but. But also, I mean, there's a lot of things that they're not going to be covered in three minutes. And. What they were saying earlier was that, once the three minutes are out, they're done for that time, but then they can come back at the next session, or later on in time allows. But it sounds like what you're saying is maybe three minutes, and that's it.
No, no, I'm sorry. Wouldn't be, that's called, he'll not. It wasn't three, five. They have, they need more time, after everybody else has gone. And they come. Everybody who's here for, not one. And if they felt they still need to explain. Thinking their lawyer, or, or, then, they have to wait, and go at that time.
Would there any other, there are some other simulations on, kind of, just look over and see if there's anything else. Or the lines.
Watch. Sit out.
I guess that's.
And watch.
Video. But I was.
Is there anything else? You all.
I don't know, I have to sit another, I'll be right back. I'm not buying it.
Well, I think. So should we use the card?
I think that might be a very. Depending on the public meeting feedback. The national hearing. Regulations. It's different.
And we're going to get that in.
Yeah, that's going to happen, we had a discussion with commissioners.
Right.
On finding another. Building.
Well, no, no.
We're getting a bit, so.
Well, in addition, we hear, and if we're all over the place. I mean, that's, um, start to load the people away. They're, they're.
And the, like, here, staying, necessarily, that's it.
I mean, realistically, in a two-hour meeting, forty people are going to have a chance to speak. So if there's eight people here, that doesn't want to have a chance. That, but then at the front of the line for the next one. And then all the people that had five minutes to speak are going to be at the back of the line. So we're going to have to keep going as long as that list is there.
Well, have we decided, one, two, six, seven? Who's that? I'm all for that.
Who's that?
She's from. Yeah. It's all the stars.
Okay, who's that? Who's that?
Last time you tried to discuss, uh, just, just listening to their comments and not giving any feedback. Is that still case?
I think in three minutes, we're not going to be time for that. We're going to have to listen to what they have to say, take notes. Once they're, it's all done, we can process that amongst ourselves and say, we want to take this under consideration, and if we don't, whatever.
I agree with you.
I don't think that we can get into a back and forth battle.
I think that's next.
Yeah.
Can we, can we adjust the time for three minutes? For it? If I, I mean, some people, some people are going to use, why is the, for, say something, or. I mean, we're not engaged.
And that's where, what they're talking about is, don't need any group time. If you got in there, you used thirty seconds, and you said, I want to give my two and a half minutes to Dick. You're hitting the altar, based on your, that's why they did a lot of that. But at the time, we're, we're still at the same time, right?
No.
We're still allowing.
No, that one person dominated the conversation. At the expense of, that, that.
And that's going to be a, a company representative, or, or, you know, we had a couple of comments of this entire document. They had a comment on each specific regulation.
I think it's good for the. I think it's, that's what we do. So, I can talk about a lot of the programs, I can talk about a whole lot of that. Three minutes to get that time, which is, kind of, you started. And just, about, just, maybe just to be sure that you're. Just going to, I don't, you know, the, from three minutes to seven minutes. Yeah, a lot of, well, I've talked, a lot of, you know. The end, the end of the five, and some of these people, I don't want to be a lot of mine, so, well. Those are the ones that are dead.
But some of the people, they're starting to see that, I did, I did.
And then, you know, for them, we're going to ask them anything.
Yeah.
They'll be the regurgitating, because they're already in this. That's why I was going to take them first, maybe that might go a lot faster. And then.
Did you guys decide that you want to put in there, uh, this document?
Yeah, I think we agreed. If you're so better, we'll be satisfied. If you want to talk about, if I need to specifically address something, you know, proposed for, not some. I don't think.
Making sure that that's, that that's, I would level some of these bits.
We can put that in notes.
That their regulations specific.
What comments must be, must address topics or is a transition?
Right. Because that's in that, in those scatters. Well, not just, with your instructions, you set it to, you can put, block. So you can't talk about projects.
It's not the reason, even though the information they found.
Yeah.
That, and they, they will continue.
We got someone else who had a comment.
And so I reserve the right to, for the immediate statement, whose comments are currently in press or in the style.
Or not, or not on. Personal.
Or a good show.
Yeah, me?
Yeah, who's going to do that?
I think I can do that.
Do you want to go in there?
Thank you.
What?
I.
I'm going to have to, here, I'm not going to talk, I'm going to be able myself. And any of you who involved her.
No, that's one of the, that's one of the, Chris was saying, we're going to do that. But I think we need to reserve that right.
Well, we can come up.
Um, I think I don't like that, because I didn't show you at all.
Me? I don't share my. You don't. So if you didn't like, I'm telling you much good. Um.
I don't think.
I don't think that we'll have to do that.
I don't.
But I don't know what our recourse is, if, if we don't preserve that.
We, well, we can include missing, well. That's our own option.
We'll also request the county commissioner's, uh, sure.
Well, I hate.
They're really offended.
I hate that, that's a big problem.
Just, please, just put it in there, so, and we can call them out.
Right. I mean, that can also be interpreted, if we don't like what they're saying, and we can drop off, but that's not what it's about. It's. Grabbing offensive.
Nothing. I'm not going to claim. It's just being fair. Yeah, just to have that, that's a good question.
Yeah, we'll have, uh.
Most true.
We'll have the rules drafted out for the neutral meeting.
Okay.
Uh, so you guys will just see those before, I guess, the.
Okay.
So, back to that, if they don't put a feedback form in, what does that mean? I mean, if they walk in the door here, and they're going to send a feedback form, basically, we don't. So they're waiting back for one, just to give us a heads up, as to what we're going to.
Yeah, because we want the sign sheet here. The wall.
Right. So they don't have to submit that.
No.
That just, that's, I'm just clarifying, or the.
So I will run something in the paper, that will be in on the cover.
Okay.
It's not going to have the rules. Uh, the rules will be up on the website. And probably with, um, Facebook, like, commissioners, Facebook page.
So it's good. It'll be in that paper on the third, but they need to submit a solar feedback.
Yeah, the third, one of them will be a meeting, and this is the date of time. They're up, up on the here.
I mean, what kind of form, that, 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 here is the line. Is there a line on there that says? I mean, we want to, they would quote, or they would refer to a specific. Section of, so. About F, like, no. Trying to find, not to be worried about.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, hope someone formulate their thoughts in three minutes, and then they may want to pick out this specific one, and I'm not talking about that for three minutes. And it's in another form, it's going to talk about that for a day.
They're all.
But they get multiple, they can have as many as they want, and then move to the back of the line.
That's true.
So I'm saying, by doing that is.
Well. And move to the back of the line. We're eleven, I've finished on. And then take the next.
Right. But if someone has five different things that they want to discuss.
So I get one three.
And, right, so that's what they, they can spend their three minutes on part of that, and then play in, kind of, around the backside for the next part of that. So, in essence, if they've got five topics, they're going to get fifteen minutes.
Makes it, I don't understand, I don't know.
Right, that's why I just wanted to clarify anything.
And even if they always submit one, and they only talk fifteen minutes, which is.
Right, no, there's, there's, there's not the three.
The first time.
The first time, but then they can come back around.
For another trial.
Yes.
And they can do that, even if they haven't submitted any.
Right.
Something jiggle in, with thirteen minutes, or second.
Well, I think we're definitely, if they were here for the first one, they're, they're all on their hands, and we can start the next one after we start.
Yeah, I mean, if they're people that signed up. If they're not going to speak, if they're, like, they're, but those obviously, to be the people, last to be first.
Start a new sign up team, for that.
And then do the solar feedback forms that will be submitted after that. And then do the solar feedback forms that will be submitted after that, and then the people will sign in on the sheet.
I would say that the forms should be submitted by the first meeting, and then we'll just go over it, sign it to the second.
I'm gathered that those that submitted, they'll need a time, a period of twenty minutes to submit.
I was going to say a lot more than three minutes.
Well, and...
And I just want to make a public statement on that, is, you know, we've allowed those feedback forms, and I read them, and I took it, took it, you know, into context, but I still, you either used it or didn't formulate mine. We're here at this day and the present, so just because somebody says something doesn't mean we have to do that. We're still formulating our opinion based on what they're saying, and I think that there's some people that say, well, they don't even listen to what we say. Well, that's incorrect. I see what's said, and I either agree or disagree. So excuse the public statement, that's not so bad.
There is a lot to read.
Yeah.
A lot to read.
I mean, if somebody is making an convincing argument, and we decide after that to change something based on that, that's what, that's what this is about.
There you go.
So this meeting, we're probably going to have like a standard procedure, call the board, I don't know if there was a public comment, maybe? I'm guessing, I don't know.
So this will be a official meeting? Or what I mean?
Is it a special meeting, probably? Because it's not really a work session.
No actions going to exist?
We only have one...
This is just going to be hearing public comment, right?
Yeah.
You're not going to take any action? Yeah, I'll ask them about that.
And I guess what I would say is, no matter what time, you know, say we have a session and the comments are all at seven, we are not taking any action.
I have those. But we do have to adjourn things forward to the session. So we're going to talk to say...
Well, I think the question is, is it a meeting or is it a...
Yeah, so you have to do a whole call of mine in minutes. Like these work sessions, we don't think that's, it's not...
And I say, if we say we're not taking in doing any individual business, then it's not classified as a meeting. I have that question.
We want the public information, and just need to be... That's cool.
I'm pretty sure talking is the idea, to be official.
I want you to know about that one. Two minutes.